Welcome to the Lee School Committee meeting. It is Tuesday, October 5 o'clock. We are at Lee Middle and High School. We're continuing to be in a virtual meeting room for Governor Baker's orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, general law, chapter thirty A, section twenty. This meeting will take place in a hybrid fashion, both virtually via Zoom or in person for those committee members and attendees choosing to access in either manner. I'm going to call this meeting to order pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty A, Section Twenty. I'm hereby informing all attendees that a video and audio recording is being made of meeting. Yes, okay. So we have a couple of fun. Come on up, guys. So Blake, which one's Blake? Blake Bessie and Logan Hurley. Look at you all here. Sorry. And Parker Stanton. Yes. So these are our three are going to lead us in the pledge, but they are also part of our composting club as well. So please join me and our three young men. You guys start and we'll follow along.
At my leisure. The flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, guys. All right. Next up, we have our mission statement, the mission of Lee Public Schools. Students have the opportunities to develop the social, civil, and critical thinking skills to thrive in an ever-changing world. Brenda, can you do a roll call?
Mr. Robin?
Here.
Absent. Miss Fisher, absent. Mr. Langwa?
Here.
Ms. Larmen?
Here.
Mr. Nichols?
Here.
And Ms. Strickler?
Here.
All right. Next up, we have approval of the September tenth, twenty twenty four Lee School Committee meeting minutes.
Motion to approve these school community meetings from September tenth to twenty.
Second. Any discussion? All right.
And just one, no, I think the time is wrong. It was, it was a four thirty, five o'clock meeting?
Oh, yeah. Thank you. Um, all right. Once you get that down, we'll roll.
Mr. Robin?
Yes.
Mr. Langwa?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Strickler?
Yes.
All right. Next up, we have public input.
Residents of Lee are invited to address the committee regarding items on this evening's agenda. At this time, issues raised will normally be referred to the administration or a subcommittee of the school committee.
Hello, everyone. Hi, I'm Cassie Kristan. I share pronouns. I want to thank you for the time and the space to speak to you this evening. And Amanda will introduce herself in a moment. We both want to talk to you all about a full day pre-K program for fall twenty twenty five. We have spoken with the superintendent about this and know he intends to speak on it this evening, which we're grateful for. But just wanted to share a couple of thoughts about why this is so essential for Lee. I myself have been here two years this October, exciting, and love the Berkshires, Lee, the gateway to the Berkshires. Early childhood education is essential for fostering growth and development in children and the communities. And strengthening the bonds between both the children, the families, and of course, the school, the elementary, and then on to middle and high school. Currently, some of the families are forced to seek care outside of Lee. And also having this full day pre-K program will help us catch up with communities around us that are currently offering this program and make Lee more attractive and desirable as a place to live, knowing that you have this support and education starting early. Also, the socio-emotional importance of setting a routine early for both the students and the the families and the school. I myself have a seven-year-old who's in second grade at Lee Elementary, and my daughter, Winifred, just started kindergarten. My son, Watson, is in the Tuesday, Thursday program for two and a half hours each day, and it's just not enough. We would love to see that full program here at Lee. And it will help create a stronger community, help pass off the burden.
My name's Amanda Frye. I actually went to Lee Schools from kindergarten all the way through high school. My family and I live in Pittsfield currently, so we choice in. I have a first grader, and I have my daughter will turn four next week, who will be in the group next year that misses the cutoff for kindergarten by about two weeks. So currently, we're doing preschool with her at St. Paul's in Stockbridge, which we love. But this will cause us an extra year that we're going to have to essentially pay for, you know, something for her to go to. And it says she'll be coming to Lee. It would be a great opportunity for her to come here and, you know, one drop off with her brother. You know, kind of get used to the school and be ready kind of for kindergarten. Another reason that we think this would be great is that, like she had mentioned before, the two hours kind of window doesn't really work for working families in the area because unless you have great support, which I'm thankful that I do. Not everybody has that, so it's really kind of hard to get kids to come here. Like I mentioned before, we do choice in, and I think having this type of a program would be helpful to get more people coming in, even from other districts. And I know a lot of people also base their decisions on where to send their kids and where they work as well. So not necessarily just that they may not live in the district, but it's easier if they're going to, you know, work five days a week. Let's take the kids with us. And having more people come in, as you know, this year, we only have two kindergarten classrooms where in the past we've had three. This could help maybe bring up those numbers, and then we all know, you know, bodies bring up the funding as well. So that's one of the things that we thought would be great. Another one would be that the curriculum could be really strongly based on what's going to be taught in kindergarten, where right now there's different programs out there. Everybody has different curriculums. But this would really be a strong focus. I know scores are always one of those things that we always talk about. So having this, you know, initial push right at the early stage, I think would be really great. And then finally, the last part. You know, just having all of our kids together. She mentioned she has three kids. I have two kids, other families in the area. You know, I find myself in the morning, I basically have a full day in the morning before getting to work because, you know, I run to, you know, run from Pittsfield to Lee. And then from Lee to Stockbridge and then to work and then sit down at my desk and, okay, we can start today. And it would just be nice, you know, one drop off, one pickup, all the times are the same. We also follow the same schedule where we would be able to say, you know, school vacations are the same where, you know, currently we're following different vacations and things. So.
And I want to add one more thing. I spoke with some state representatives to get some mentorship on this, and thank you again for your mentorship when we spoke. And another thing, I started a petition because I just wanted to see, is this just me or do people want this? And quickly had, you know, several responses that I had to start paying for the petition. It was no longer free. So. All right, let's bring this forward. We have so many people who are in favor of this, and I'm seeing a lot of nodding heads and smiles, so we really appreciate your time letting us speak this evening.
Thank you.
Thanks. Any questions?
No, I mean, I I sent my kids to St. Mary's, you know, I, you know, I lived in Pittsfield annually because we didn't have a full day program. And I made that, I think you and I chatted pretty candidly about that when my kids, my youngest was still in preschool. And I would be happy, and I'm very happy with the education they got there, and I'd be happy to have a similar program here that can support the school for all the reasons that you, that both of you discussed. So.
Awesome.
Generally support.
Great. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? In our?
No.
Okay.
I don't believe, I think I recognize that name. Ben Chair.
All right. Next up, we have our our reports, our student representatives are not here because they're playing sports. And this is not a convenient tag of sports playing. So this year, our student representatives are Sophia Huntin. Let's say Vanessa.
Yes.
Vanessa, sorry, it's Briggs. Vanessa Bartini and Elliot Gariboli. Yeah, okay. They have, they have prepared a little spiel for me to read out for you guys. It says, the new student council has been formed. They had their first meeting last Thursday and decided that their main goal for this year is to improve school culture by planning special events. For projects that can develop a positive attitude across the school, help with mental health, and improve student-to-student or student-to-staff relationships. The GSA is working on their middle school outreach. They've not chosen when it will be yet. They are sponsoring a new book club. They will meet after school on Wednesdays to focus on LGBTQ plus books. Robotics is hoping to find sponsors and fundraise to be able to purchase more parts for the robot, robot, robot frame they're working on. They are going to meet with Lennox Robotics team in two weeks on the twenty-first after school. Social justice is creating a presentation to help educate people on the importance of voting and the different sides of politics. The senior class has just begun their pie fundraiser. They will also be selling blue grams during the next week during lunches. This is to raise funds for their senior group. And the juniors have announced that home, the homecoming theme is seventies and tickets will begin selling soon. Oh, that was a presentation for them, sorry. Sorry, guys. I missed you after I had you come up here. Come back. I'm right up to the front so we can all look upon your beautiful faces.
I am. Ms. Duhon and Ms. Herman are here supporting these young men tonight. I've got a presentation that they have put together that I will share with the committee if you guys want to step up once. Yes, it's me. Obviously, it's not still me. All right.
Guys look good, sitting up their way impatiently. They weren't nervous. Mike, you're making a voice.
I wish that I could be helpful. I'm not sure why.
And principal guys, huh?
There's never. That's not me. That's Betsy. I'm going to stop the share. We'll try again. All right. When I go to full screen and, you know, maybe we just may have to just. We don't want to torture you. So we're not going to be in full screen, gentlemen, but have that. If you let me know when you want me to advance a slide.
Each year, the robotics team has a research project. In twenty nineteen, it was connected with the fifth-grade science composting. Miss Duhon wrote a grant to obtain the Earth Cube to support the robotics research project in the twenty nineteen and twenty twenty school year. But COVID shut everything down, so it wasn't until twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one that the grant was secured. Then it took over a year to receive the cube. Finally, in twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two, Miss Duhon and the fifth-grade students started using the Earth Cube to start composting their cafeteria waste in the late winter, early spring.
In the twenty twenty-two, in the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year, just fourth and fifth grade classes composted. Parker Stanton and Blake Bessie were able to leave the fourth grade in composting their cafeteria food waste. By early spring, the Earth Cube became too full to use. By twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, fifth grade and sixth grade continued using the Earth Cube with considerable help. From now, fifth-grade students, Parker Stanton, Blake Bessie, Logan Hurley, and Daniel Casey. The Earth Cube once again have, had, once again, became too full to use, so we had to stop composting our food waste. The question was, how are we going to get the entire school involved, collecting for two grades filled the composter?
Hey, you can go through all the pictures until the next Friday.
Yeah.
In spring of twenty twenty-four, a Lee Green Gateway community, LGGC, donated grant money to pay for hauling food waste from both schools. The LES fiction and fifth-grade students started to use Tommy's compost bin to haul food away. An attempt to compost schoolwide was made for the last couple of weeks of the year in hopes to work out any trouble spots and start strong in the fall. This year, the food waste collected was evaluated and changes were made. On September twentieth, we began having five days of food waste collected for all of LES cafeteria and kitchen food waste. Tommy's compost is hauling it away to metal farms.
We want to share our success with the LMHS and teach the students to adapt to compost and food waste. At the moment, only the kitchen at LMHS is using the compost bin. The LGGC is funding this, the food waste program for most of the year. The Cool Air Communities Grant will cover any remaining balances after three thousand dollars.
Oh, yeah. You can play with you.
Why is you?
Yeah.
Since you can't hear it, I will quickly speak over this. This is part of the presentation that was given to the LES faculty at our last faculty meeting and introduced them to to this process. So we had, we had teachers participating in videos, students participating in the videos, so that was. Demonstrate the to-dos and the not-todos amongst, or during, during breakfast and lunchtime. And I think it's really important before we finish this, that Ms. Duhon gets an extraordinary amount of credit for the amount of time. She gives up each day to be in the cafeteria before school during her lunchtime to make sure that students are operating successfully. That's, you guys, you can talk to what this is.
So this is our food waste setup. We have a compost screen. The compost bin is that big green one. We have our grabbers in case somebody puts food in the trash so we can pick it out without having to.
Or plastic in the composter.
Yeah, and then that's our milk bucket. So then, my student comes up or anything, we can have them put their tray on there and take out their straw, put the straw in the trash and dump their milk into there. That's basically our end job.
It's very good. And these young men have been present and giving their own time, too, to make sure that the younger students are, have some peer models in the cafeteria. Similar program, we're going to run into the same issue, I think, with the volume, unfortunately, but so that you can see. Well, when this gets posted to the website, we'll all be able to click on the links to hear them. But the good news here, boys, or sorry, if I jump in, is that we're showing that whether you're bringing your move from home or you're purchasing school lunch, same opportunities exist. So again, I'll speak over the video. What we've tried to encourage students to do is to take care of as much of the consolidation of their products at the, on their tray, at their table before they get to. The composting area so that it's more efficient and more manageable, especially for the custodial crew. With the beginning, a little bit of a cleanup job to do, but we've, we've overcome those jobs.
Oh, no.
There's more.
We didn't get a script to this.
We also don't have a script to this. Yeah, I already read this one.
They read this one.
Respectful for our earth, responsible with our ways, ready to help others learn too.
Don't go anywhere. I have a question. So you guys are going to work with the middle high school to get something set up down here?
Yes.
Yes, okay. And then my other question for you is, I noticed you're having everything separated out. Are you guys recycling all the like plastics and stuff and paper that can be recycled too? Is that your job or is that like a recycle job?
That's, we don't do that.
But Mrs. Duhon's, you're doing that tomorrow.
We are trying.
Mrs. Duhon has been trying to do a recycling club since I was a teacher here way back in the early two thousands. So I love that you have persevered. So thank you. Thank you, boys. That was amazing. Did anybody else have questions?
No, nice job, Julie.
Yeah, and I appreciate you guys sticking with it, like even through like all the turmoil of COVID and all that kind of stuff. You'd like stuck with it and kept your, your commitment. That's amazing.
Seeing a lot of these that pounded on it. That's, that's really good. How much that per year or that?
That's for a month.
Per month?
Yeah.
Wow.
It's great.
Yeah, and there is true, there really is buy-in. The kids are holding each other accountable to do it in the building. And it's becoming, it's becoming natural for them. They get a lot of assistance from the adults who are in the cafeteria in the morning and those who are available at lunchtime as well. We try to do some of the cleanup of the, the non-compostable products so that there's less for them to worry about. As we cycle through the cafeteria, but it's been fantastic.
Good job, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. That's great. All right. Next up, we have Superintendent.
We tried again. So we'll go back to what we were doing a moment ago. I apologize for this. So we haven't experienced this before. I think you'll still be able to see everything. I can make the screen larger as necessary when we get to other details. Six hundred and forty students was the enrollment as of October first, but I believe that once we finalize. Our number one submission, Greg, we're at six forty-two. Yes, we're so that six hundred and forty-two students was the final, was the final number. So. You can still see those couple of grades where there is a concern, including obviously the existing kindergarten, which leads me. To the conversation about full, full day pre-K and, and I want to thank Cassie and Amanda for speaking up about it. It's part of our strategic plan that we developed a couple of years ago. The idea of, of expanding pre-K opportunities. So that need has been identified and it's been on the books for a couple of years. I think that the, it would help to, obviously, meeting the goal is, is, is a some, some standard, if you would, of why we want to do this, but I will ask. For it to be on an upcoming strategic planning, so the agenda. It will work, I think, to assist us in our declining enrollment. We may have to make some adjustments to a policy as well as our potential financial plan around pre-K. We eliminated the tuition costs associated with pre-kindergarten a couple of years ago. That might suggest that if we plan to open it up, that that may need to be revisited, but that's a conversation for a later date. I think it will address, as was mentioned earlier, academic achievement levels, getting students into a more formalized program that is aligned with what we do. Here in the Lee Public Schools will be helpful to the students in the long run and to the families, certainly in the short run. It would be a lower no-cost option for, for Lee residents and might theoretically be cost-neutral depending on what. Decisions we need to make relative to the budget. So in my mind, I imagine that we only had. Two kindergarten teachers this year in budget for three. There's, there's a placeholder in our existing budget for a pre-kindergarten teacher if we only need two sections. Of kindergarten, of course, what it might mean is we only need two sections of first grade next year. So that placeholder, again, exists. And then the target students would be, would be four-year-olds. So full day, I think, full day for three-year-olds is, is too much. But full day for four-year-olds can certainly be, can certainly be managed. So. On the, I skipped over the part about the lower no-cost option. I think that's a finance subcommittee. Agenda item that should be addressed more sooner than later. If we want to target a start date of fall of twenty twenty-five. If that's not an unreasonable ask, an assessment of the facilities at LES, we would be able to accommodate that, that classroom as. As needed. So just wanted to bring that to the committee's attention. We know that it's been on, on your agenda before because of the strategic plan. But I think now is the time for us to really start to make decisions about whether we want to implement this beginning next year. I will move into a conversation on MCAS, everybody's favorite subject. Quickly, important to note, neither school requires assistance or intervention. Key, key phrase here, due to substantial progress towards targets. So both schools, both schools are showing improvement towards the targets. I'm not going to bore you and we, and we only have one or two guests joining us online, but. All of the data that you're going to see are available online. There is nothing that I'm going to share that is, that was put together. By us behind, behind the, the security portal on Desi. It's all publicly available data, but it's been synthesized for you for easy consumption. Let me see if I can make this bigger. That's not going to help you very much, is it? Some. So from the, from the district perspective, right? So the seventy-first, seventy-first percentile. When we look at LES, fifty-eight percentile, when you look at LMHS, the sixty-seventh percentile. There's formulas for how that gets calculated. The, the value of twenty twenty-four testing is sixty percent compared to forty percent from the previous year. Again, these details here, I got to straighten this down. I apologize. That's about what you need to see. Grade three ELA, if you go left to right, and you're going to see the same formula for Principal Burgendi's. Data, we go from exceeding expectations on the far left to the, right about the middle of those columns to not meeting expectations. If a number is red, it means we are. Behind the state five or more percentage points. If you see it in green, it means we are ahead of the state five or more percentage points. You have to take some. Small wins sometimes, right? For instance, if you look at grade three math and you see fourteen percent not meeting compared to the state of twenty, that's a small win. We really have, prefer to have that number smaller. And have a number bigger as we move to the left. But again, I think the small wins are necessary for everybody in the community. Achievement percentiles over here, you can see we struggled with, with grade three ELA, but we did well in grade three math. We hope to see those math numbers continue to get better as well as the ELA numbers continue to get better as the high-quality instructional materials get more comfortable with our teachers. Grade four, I don't want to call out any teachers specifically for sure, but grade four was definitely the most challenging of the grades last year in testing in LES. You'll see on the far left that there were no students. Those are percentage numbers, but one student gets us to two percent. There were no students who exceeded expectations and. Not enough, I would suggest, students meeting in a large number, partially meeting. And this is a target group for us. This is. uh for us. This is a place where we can get some quick wins. We can really move these students from partially meeting uh to meeting expectations with some targeted interventions uh that we are working on. And I'll talk a little bit more more about that uh in my principal's report. Grade five, I need to shrink even more because they have three uh areas where grade five is tested. So you add science to the mix uh in grade uh in grade five, uh but you'll see that we had a couple of, again, we'll take them small wins. Here, we want those green numbers to really be over here in the exceeding and uh meeting expectations. Math uh was was a pretty successful year when you look at the comparison to the state. Uh and then um in ELA, we struggled again here in grade five. Grade six um I thought was uh I was actually pretty blown away uh that we had uh sixteen percent of our students exceeding expectations in in ELA. Yes, that's about eight students. I understand that, but that's the biggest number that you've seen. Uh to date, you're gonna see some bigger numbers when we get to LMHS, but there's still wins. The other wins here are student growth, fifty-eight percent student growth uh in grade six ELA and sixty-six percent for achievement percentiles. Thought those were very respectable. Some key takeaways and action steps for LES. Uh the concern um uh things that I've already said, the low number of students who are exceeding expectations, we've got to do better to get that number um into double digits in in every in every grade uh for sure. And then the negative deviations, there was a lot of red. Um there was a lot of red on that chart. And again, that's no reflection on any individual or any group. Um but collectively, as a as a school, we need to do better. We started our grade level data team meetings where and where we've got a repository for all the data that's been collected. Uh where where we've got our targeted interventions being uh scheduled. Uh we are partnering partnering with Open Architect and I appreciate um Mr. Langloch uh connecting me with uh separate C and Open Architects. We're building our platform right now with them. Uh we it won't be fully developed until probably the first week of December. Uh takes takes them some time, but it's going to be a truly interactive um data platform that will allow us to triangulate data between attendance, uh school-administered benchmarks, state-administered testing, access testing, you name it, we're gonna be able to look at, really drill down. And it will, my expectation is it will help us to make sure that we are giving students uh all the attention that they need. And then uh you know, they continued active to see about attendance. Um I got uh mixed feedback from uh letters that have been going home uh to families about attendance, but I'm going to be relentless and reminding them about the importance of it. Today was truly amazing to me to hear uh get some emails from families saying, there's no way my child was absent party or dismissed early this number of times. And when I said, well, if they had heard on this day, this day, this day, this day, this day. Oh, it's easy to forget, you know, when those dates happen, you know, at the end of August or the beginning of September, time goes by and you forget about it. Uh so we're gonna continue to push hard. Um again, from LES, and I'm gonna turn it over to Greg here in a moment. Uh thirty thousand, we're gonna drill down with the curriculum subcommittee um at at an upcoming date. So, you know, I mean, is it okay to transition right to right to Greg now? Okay, Greg?
Um so so, excuse me, seventh grade um was challenging for us uh this past year, as you can see there um both in ELA and in math. Again, similar to what Superintendent Richard was saying, we have that large bubble that partially meaning expectations that we need to to move move up. Um take some solace in the fact that our not-meeting-expectations group was at slightly or slightly below um the state in both of those. So if we can move those partials up, um we'll be in a better place. In both ELA and math, this cohort saw a decrease um in their um meeting and exceeding uh percentages from sixth grade. Although the not-meeting only down as well. Um so that was a positive. Seventh grade was definitely our most challenging group in terms of MCAS scores. Eighth grade was a bit better. Uh we almost meant to say average in ELA. Um and math, we were below there again. And we again for math, see that large group and partially needing um much lower not-meeting-expectations and math for grade eight than this compared to the state. Um both of these were essentially unchanged um in their for this cohort from their seventh grade school. Great. Science was a bright spot, certainly, um where we definitely, we did better than the state pretty much across the board there um in terms of meeting and exceeding. Um and in terms of not meeting expectations with their achievement percentile of sixty-five, that was nice to see. High school biology was also a bright spot um with sixty-four percent uh meeting or exceeding expectations compared to forty-nine for the state. Um and then that meeting also definitely a bright spot with only three percent of that expectations compared to a for the state for the achievement percentile of sixty-four um and ninety-two percent of the students meeting their competency determination for biology for graduate. Um grade ten was a definite bright spot for us. Um grade ten did exceptionally well with seventy-seven percent meeting or exceeding expectations compared to fifty-seven for the state. And we had zero students not meeting expectations. Uh with an achievement percentile of eighty-five and a hundred percent of the students meeting their confidence and determination. This is significant change from their eighth grade um test result, which was the last time they were tested two years prior. Um grade ten math was also impressive with seventy-six percent of our students meeting or exceeding expectations compared to forty-eight for the state. Only three percent not meeting expectations, uh achievement percentile of seventy-six with ninety-eight percent meeting their competency determination. Um just as with ELA, this was a significant change in this cohort um from fifty-three percent in eighth grade scoring meeting or exceeding expectations up to seventy-six percent. So that change is definitely possible as we can see over time. Um just from that one cohort in tenth grade and will continue to work in many of the same things uh that Superintendent Richard mentioned to try to address these uh in the areas where we are not where we want to be. So, I'll see the questions.
That's easy for you, Charlie. Okay.
Hi, just um I'm just wondering about that seventh grade and how that compares to previous years when they make that jump from the elementary school up to the middle high school. Is that a trend always with seventh grade or is that just unique to this year?
Um I I wouldn't say always. The transition years tend to see a bit of a a little bit of a decrease. It's not normally quite this pronounced.
I'll keep moving. A quick day of AI. Next Friday, six of our uh faculty members will be heading to MIT uh to work with uh with former Commissioner Riley. Uh and I think from what I can gather, they seem pretty excited about it, maybe a little bit nervous about having to travel into Cambridge for an eight-thirty meeting. Uh but um but they've got a long ride, but I think it'll be well worth it. I took a look at the agenda and uh the the topics and the presenters are pretty outstanding. I think they're gonna come back with a lot. Uh there's one in-person meeting. This is it. The other meetings will be um uh will be uh more local for them. Uh quick, just an FYI to committee members. We do, we will need to convene uh the subcommittees. Uh Brenda has reached out, if not already, she will be uh to everybody to keep us updated. Negotiations are ongoing. Uh we know finance meets regularly. Policy and curriculum have some uh some work to do, as does strategic planning. Um, excuse me, and we met at the end of September uh with some members from the towns, a master plan uh committee to uh hear their uh concerns, their questions about the future of the Lee Public Schools. And I don't know whether Mr. Langloch.
Just a point of clarification, it wasn't the um master planning committee's concerns, it was a private individuals' concerns who happened to be a member of the master planning committee. I think it's just the important distinction to be to be made. It was an interesting discussion. Um we'll take it under advisement as we move forward in our own strategic planning initiatives. We'll just leave it at that.
That was very misleading. I I think I will send a follow-up email.
Oh, I thought you were talking to me here.
No, no, no. His his contact to me was very misleading.
No, he did not represent.
Okay, then I will send a follow-up email.
Um and in closing, um I just want to thank Principal Burgendi, this is our national uh our principal's appreciation month and uh Greg, thank you for for everything you do for the kids down here in LMHS. Uh I will say that I do miss seeing them uh on a daily basis, although I'm sure you don't miss seeing me. That's uh that's all that I have for my report tonight.
All right. Any other questions for Mike?
I guess I would just echo if it's uh principal appreciation month. Mike, thank you uh for stepping up in the LES principal. I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead. I was gonna say the same thing. I think that we've been very fortunate to have somebody that has stepped into the position that's familiar with the building, play with people.
Yep, you're very welcome.
Um full day pre-K. Uh obviously, I'm all about that. I think it's a great idea. I think it's good for us. I for talking about putting uh pupils in chairs uh long term, I think it's great to get them in as early as possible. Um so I, you mentioned putting this on finance subcommittee. Is it inappropriate now to ask that we put uh pre-K on finance subcommittee for next month? We are the chair of that committee. Are you are you ready for to have that conversation? Sure, I'm ready for that conversation. Yeah, and the conversation really will look like, do you want to charge tuition uh or not? And so we'll come with some some data about what surrounding communities uh can do and be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we align our thinking strategically. I don't know if it's appropriate at that finance subcommittee meeting if members of the strategic planning committee can also join. I kind of have a joint meeting. I just don't want to put the cart before the horse. We'll think about long-term sustainability.
So you um the challenge there becomes uh if the you can't have a joint meeting of two subcommittees because you're gonna have a majority of of school committee. So you could you could have it and you could you could uh you could get creative, you can switch um meetings. In other words, you could have a you could have a finance committee meeting and your strategic planning committee can observe but not participate. Then you could have a strategic planning meeting and your finance committee members could observe but not participate. Could we also, I mean, we we're just we're just talking about like numbers, what it would look like financially, right? That's that's kind of what we wouldn't be walking the district into a a a plan. I think it would just be looking at, this is what we could potentially foresee as, you know, to the financial impact of the district if we decided to do any one of these different avenues. I mean, where I I I don't.
Okay, I asked a question.
Yeah, well, no, I I I appreciate it.
It's an advantage because you're on both committees, so you can always.
So yeah, I think that would, that might be a nice idea. I'll I'll get, I'll work with Brian that will get some, try to find it. Uh we'll try to find a date for it for everyone. Thank you.
Any other questions for Superintendent slash Principal? All right.
I just have one very quick.
We're just gonna go right into the.
Sure, very quick into into the elementary school. Uh we uh were rolling out a a new uh SS uh student support system. Thank you. Um that will, it it's a student support team and this is a system that's uh we're working on. We'll replace what had previously been known as a BAT team, uh but we've created structures that are in place that I think will um help to streamline the process both for faculty and for uh the leadership in the building uh so that uh there are data points that need to be hit, there are steps that need to be taken uh before we will as as a team entertain uh addressing individual students' needs. And a lot of this is on ownership and communication, something that we've been, or at least that I've been very uh upfront about making sure is happening. So um so we're working on that. The lending library structure was installed. Thank you to uh Jeff and to Tyler uh Planky for uh for helping Abby uh book her library box uh up. We need some signage to make sure people are aware of what it is. There are books in there now. If anyone in the community wishes to take advantage of it, please do. Take one, leave one, take some, leave some, do whatever you want to do, but it is uh is there to make sure that um that reading um and 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 literature is available to the students of all ages. The only task is that it be age-appropriate um so that uh students are accessing quality materials. Uh evaluation is is in place underway. Uh the playground was painted a few weeks ago. Again, thank you to Jeff uh for helping us get that all set and thank you to those uh families who showed up. Uh we got the US map painted and foursquare courts painted. Uh we're gonna tackle the world map and other play systems in the spring. Uh we just ran out of time and the world map I know the world is a complex uh place, but man, that map was a complex. We didn't have, we just didn't have time to tackle it that day. Uh I'm working on analyzing uh the schedules at the elementary school, see if adjustments need to be made. Clubs and activities are active. And uh we put some additional signage uh around the school to make sure people are are reminded to uh turn their cars off when they're waiting in line. It is remarkable that at um two-twenty uh cars are sitting in the circle uh waiting to pick up their child uh forty-five minutes later. Uh so we just want to make sure that we're not polluting the environment. And I know while Miss Duhon is gone, she appreciates us. That's all that I.
Any questions for Principal? All right, moving on to Lehman High School. Great.
Um on September nineteenth, we had a whole school assembly to hear from a guest speaker, Mark Line Weaver. His presentation was well received by students and staff and focused on the idea that character matters, everything we do with a special emphasis on being kind to each other and on social media interactions. Mark um responded, he was impressed with our students, especially um when he was able to talk in small groups after the presentations of the kind of insightful questions they were asking. So that was very good. Um and over the Founder's Weekend, several uh LMHS groups were involved. The combined middle and high school bands, of course, marched in the parade. Um the class twenty-twenty-six old root beer floats, which are apparently still very popular. They made a ton of money. Um and the cross-country team ran the Main Street Mile, the whole race, they ran, they organized and 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 ran the race before the parade. On September twenty-seventh, our first interim grade reports for the school year were issued. Um at this point, we're now issuing weekly grade and attendance updates to students and families each Friday um that we don't have an interim grade report to help keep everyone apprised of student performance throughout here. Last week, the high school student council had its organizational meeting, um as the student report mentioned, so its focus for the year and elected its leadership, including the three student reps. Um but hopefully in the future, we'll be able to. Um coming up, we have several college and career readiness events on the calendar. We have career field trips to Interprint in Pittsfield on October fifteenth and Onyx Family on October twenty-eighth. Um bussing for those are paid through a grant or a sphere. Um, excuse me, PSAT testing takes place on October twenty-second with SAT testing two days later in school on October twenty-fourth. Uh Mr. Courtney is in the process of, he's actually wrapping this up now, meeting with each senior individually, discuss their host post-high school plans and what is needed to get there. The middle school will be taking its annual team bonding hike at Barretown State Forest on October twenty-fifth. Junior class is sponsoring a preschool homecoming dance with the seventies theme as mentioned on Saturday the twenty-sixth. And we'll have the annual homecoming pep rally in the afternoon of the twenty-fifth. Um we got a surprise um uh donation of wood from the state. Um I did not know that the October Mountain State Forest ran its own sauna um for the trees that they um harvest each. Um for the trees that they um harvest each year, and they had a lot of extra and provided a huge. Amount of rough cut sawed wood of hardwoods, pine, everything. Um for the wood shop and tremendous pile of wood in there, so it was much appreciated. Um and lastly, a couple last items, picture retake days on October thirtieth. We will reach the halfway point of first semester on Friday, November first. Um which is when our next interim grade reports will be issued to students and parents. And as mentioned earlier, the Social Justice Club will be running a presidential election event for high school students on November first.
Any questions, Greg? Alright, next up, special education again.
Um so last week, we sent out some parent surveys from the special education department. Um one of the, there was two reasons, but one of them, our CPAC since, which is the Special Education Parent Advisory Council. Um has not been active since COVID. Um we had only a few members at that time and it kind of dispersed. Um and so we have had some interest in getting that restarted. Right now, we're on a waiver for the state because it is required advisory council for us to have. Um so we have at least eight families who expressed interest in doing that, as well as some families. Um who their children have graduated, but they'd still like to help and set up some events in the community. Um so we are working with the Federation as well as the Collaborative for Educational Services. Um to get some training for our CPAC, which hopefully we will have back within the next four or five weeks. As well as some parent workshops around like basic rights. Um evaluation and eligibility in special education, the new IEP is probably the biggest one that people are looking. To get some training on. Um we've been pretty lucky, the special education staff had six half day trainings last year. And then we were able to have Laurel I uh Laurel from the collaborative come in and do. Um some training with all of the staff to give everybody an overview. Um and that was due to the two seventy four grant, which we are hoping to get again this year, which will allow more people to get trained. Um. The other thing that some families were looking at, um we have some families for students in that eighteen to twenty two age range. So we're gonna try to see if we can have some more information um about transition services and what's out there. And the life skills teacher and myself have actually been meeting with a few different organizations that have some day programs in the area. Um that most of our students have not participated in, but some of the students we have now may be. A good partnership for them as they get ready to move on to adult services. Um. Along with the preschool um for next year, I'm actually taking part in a um. Early Childhood Leadership Institute through DESI, it's throughout the whole year. There are six days when we are in person in Ashland over the year, and then there's another seven parts that we're doing virtually. Um and we're doing uh some coursework along with that. My capstone is actually. Our our project. How do we end up um with having a full day preschool? What does that look like? What are the requirements? Do we have tuition? What does that look like? Is it an integrated preschool? So there's lots and lots of questions around that. Um and the institute's focusing on functional and ongoing assessments for students in preschool. Um effective teaming and collaboration both with parents and with. Um the community and with the faculty and just making them a part of the community. Um family engagement and student engagement. So those are the four areas that we're focusing on. And open positions. We have hired the last open special education position for paraprofessionals. We're just waiting on some paperwork to finish up. And we have all of the long-term substitute and paraprofessional positions filled. Once that is done. We were able to hire someone through Salient, which is a staffing agency to get a speech pathologist. In the interim, while we continue that search so that our students do not have to go without services. Um Dana Oliva, our other full-time um speech pathologist, has been working really hard to see as many of those students as she can. Um but I know it's overwhelming, so having this other person start with us um on the fifteenth, I think will be great. She's already came and visited one time. So we're hoping that will get us through um this year, and we are still posting the position and looking for a full-time person. Um certified speech language pathologist.
Any questions for Jen? You always get to go last.
Update on the HVAC control project, all the programs complete. We've got a couple bad controllers to be upgraded. Uh there's a leak in the water heater in L E S. Um we have some many over the video just welded. Um this was welded in the past, and that will get us through for. Uh I'm working with our food service director, Shane Gaglero, to replace the cafeteria tables in old schools with food service funds. And we continue to look for grants and alternative funding for the roofs, especially.
Any questions for Jen?
Just a quick for the committee on the cafeteria table. Uh the funding from that comes from the food service account. Which we need to have a plan to spend down. Uh we have an extraordinary amount of money in that account. And and uh much beyond what the state allows us uh to keep. And so we have to spend that money on food service related uh product. Or staffing uh combinations, whatever it might be. So tables are are one thing, you know, uh. Coat hooks uh for the elementary school to put on the on the walls. Another thing, uh again, when we. When when we look at how many, what what other creative ways can we spend it, but we we've got a lot that needs to be spent down, so that that expenditure will not be. At all tied to um to the foundation budget.
I think those days have been.
Twenty two.
Any other questions or thoughts? Alright, thanks, everybody. Um the other thing I wanted to let you guys know about before we move on to committee reports is I got a lovely email from Jen. Uh Carlino, Lori Curtin, and um. Julia Warner um asking us if we wanted to join them on Thursday morning. It's their first walk to school day. Uh they will be meeting there at seven forty in the park. If anybody wants to join, um and they're also doing another one on November fourteenth. So anybody that wants to join them, they are more than welcome. I unfortunately be in here.
Fourteenth is the Ruby Bridges.
I will be there. I put it in my. Alright, next up, we have committed reports and our only committee report this month is finance.
So yeah, we uh financed that uh prior to this meeting here. Uh and we talked about a few things, but we'll start with the awards. Mr. Jeff.
So we had two warrants since our last meeting. And accounts payable, the first one was on September eleventh for one hundred sixty three thousand four hundred forty five dollars and thirty two cents. The top vendors for that warrant were the Boys and Girls Club of Berkshire's branches in DuFord. The second warrant was on September twenty fifth for one hundred ninety six thousand three hundred sixteen dollars and thirteen cents. The top vendors in that warrant were Driscoll, Hillcrest, and LV Corp.
Okay, we'll entertain a motion for the account. Oh, sorry, I'm gonna talk about.
Oh, yeah, we, yeah, so we talked about generally. This warrant. No, you're fine, it's your show.
Uh does anybody wanna make a a motion for accounts payable?
Well, I'll make a motion to approve counts payable uh the total amount of three hundred fifty nine thousand. Six hundred seven, excuse me, seven hundred sixty one dollars and forty five cents.
Any discussion? Brenda, can you roll call us, please?
Mr. Robin?
Yes.
Mr. Langwell?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Strickler?
Yes.
So then payroll warrants from the past month totaled six hundred twenty one thousand nine hundred twenty nine dollars and seventy cents.
And yes, we discussed this as well, uh and we approved this.
Let me make a motion for the payroll.
Make a motion to approve the payroll at six hundred and twenty one thousand nine hundred twenty nine dollars and seventy cents. How second?
Any discussion? Right, can you roll call us again?
Mr. Robin?
Yes. Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Of state.
Ms. Strickler?
Yes.
We also talked about a couple other things, a lot of them's coming up in new business. Um and then one uh item about tuition agreements, we just generally discussed, uh I got moved to next month. But then one thing it needs uh we should just talk about quickly or just mention um as far as our budget for next year, the town has a new payroll system. And it's gonna be an increase to our budget of twenty two thousand dollars we're responsible for. So that's gonna, it's gonna. You know, it could be a, but. Is what it is.
You bought this system.
A payroll system, yeah, the town's changing the payrolls and we are responsible for twenty thousand dollars.
Okay.
So I had lots.
Thanks. Uh we have no old business to discuss, so we move on to new business uh and bursting up is co-op wrestling with Mount Everest.
We have had um some interests expressed by some of our current students to wrestle. Um which is a winter sport with the MIA in Massachusetts. Um and we have identified um. Mount Everest as a host school that has been. Um offered to host a co-op team with us. Um it has been approved by the uh PBIAC. Um so um. We just need the school committee's blessing uh to be able to have students participate in that.
That's great. But you wanna make a motion?
A motion to approve uh co-op wrestling with Mount Everest.
I was second.
Any discussion?
Is this a co-op team? And then what financial implications?
There are no financial implications for us. It's all born by the hosting. And students are responsible for their transportation.
Any other discussion? Brenda, can you roll call us?
Mr. Robin?
Yes.
Mr. Langwell?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Strickler?
Yes.
Alright, next up, we have a donation.
The robotics team at LMHS has received a donation from um Advanced Manufacturing Company, Westfield, with five hundred dollars. Um to be used um for supplies and other materials that the team may need to purchase.
We did discuss that finance three uh and we approved and are grateful this donation.
If they like to make a motion.
I made a motion to accept the five hundred dollars uh for the robotics team.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Brenda, can you roll call us?
Mr. Robin?
Yes.
Mr. Langwell?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Strickler?
Yes.
Next up, we have overnight field trip.
Again, um every two years, the high school band uh takes an overnight trip. Not always to fill the the other bit to a close by city. Um where they do several activities, uh they go to museums, they attend a concert, they have a clinic this time um. I wanna say it's at the university, yeah. Um and um it's a great experience for them. It is one overnight night. It's a Saturday to Sunday, so school time is not impacted. Um they essentially pay for this through the band parents organization through the fundraising. Uh the resales that they do each um fall or. Um you know, Christmas wreaths and all that sort of stuff is the biggest part of the fundraiser they do for that. This is the year for its two-year cycle, so they're asking your approval since it is an overnight field trip. Um for this field trip to.
Motion to approve the band overnight field trip.
How second?
Any discussion? Brenda, can you roll call us?
Mr. Robin?
Yes.
Mr. Langwell?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Strickler?
Yes.
Very true. Uh alright, next up, we have future business. Our next meeting is November twelfth at five o'clock. And all we have left to do is somebody's make a motion for German.
I'll make a motion to a jerk.
Second. Any discussion? Brenda, can you roll call us up?
Mr. Robin?
Yes.
Mr. Langwell?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Strickler?
Yes.
They're adjourned at six oh five.